Welcome, everyone, to the Eugene City Council's September 16th work session. We're going to start out today. I didn't ask for permission, I just did it, which is to take a few minutes to wish our Councilor Betty Taylor a happy birthday. Happy birthday, Betty.
(applause)
Flowers and a little certificate of appreciation for the many years of service she's given to our community and in celebration of an auspicious 90th birthday. Thank you. That's all for today.
(applause)
Can we give you a message, Betty? You don't have to.
Just, thank you. (laughing) You don't have, nobody has to have a funeral for me now. (laughing)
I don't want to make any kind of bad joke now, so do that.
It's okay.
This is the council meeting, right? I came to the right. We do occasionally do that.
All right. Back to business on this good day. First work session item today is a stormwater program update. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor, and as you know, this has been an ongoing conversation for the last couple of years, and Craig and Mark will lead us in a presentation and conversation.
All right. Thank you, City Manager and Mayor and Council. The purpose of this work session is for Council to review the current stormwater program and rate structure and to consider an amendment to the definition of stormwater service to include the operations and maintenance of parks. First, I'd like to briefly provide some information that might be useful for this discussion that has come out of our community engagement work this summer around the Parks and Recreation System Plan. Over the last six months, we have connected extensively with the public to find out what they think about parks and recreation facilities. Through presentations to groups and clubs, listening sessions with key stakeholders, surveys, and holding over 35 pop-up park events throughout the city, we now have a clear picture of what the public wants and needs from their parks. And we all know that our parks are among the most visible assets the city has. They are always on display to the public. They are also heavily used. Approximately 90,000 people use our parks each month. This is a very high visitation rate, and almost every type of person in the community is using our parks at some time throughout the year. How well-run and maintained these parks are helps form people's opinions about the city. And our recent discussion with residents and the statistically valid survey conducted over the summer shows that Eugenians understand this and want their parks to be well-run and maintained. When asked how important it was that the city adequately fund the maintenance of parks and recreation facilities so that they are safe, accessible, usable, and attractive, 81% of respondents said this is very important to them, and that is a level of support you don't see very often for city services, according to the folks who helped us put the survey together and conduct these surveys across the nation. The remainder of our survey questions and other community engagement work over the last six months has consistently shown us that the public strongly supports parks and recreation and understands the importance of these services. And we hope to be back in front of Council in November with a thorough report on what we heard from the community and where we are in the process of updating the Parks and Recreation System Plan. So, back to the stormwater for parks and a little background. Last fall, as you might recall, the Council reviewed a report on the state of Eugene's Parks and Recreation Facilities, and this report described current park conditions, the impacts of these conditions on park users, and how this is the result of a systemic funding gap for operating and maintaining existing parks. This funding gap was established over years of budget reductions in the General Fund for Parks totaling $1.2 million. Associated service reductions that resulted from less funding for park maintenance have included the closing of several park restrooms, reduced overall park cleaning, less irrigation, mowing, tree, and landscape care. Capital assets throughout the park system have also been impacted by these reductions. Assets such as playground equipment, restroom facilities, lighting, and irrigation systems are now in a state of deferred maintenance, and this means these assets receive less routine preventative maintenance, leading to shorter life cycles, which ultimately equates to more expense for maintenance over the long run due to replacement of equipment within a shorter timeframe than expected. The report also showed how the Parks and Open Space Division has done a great deal to increase operating efficiencies, like working more with volunteers, growing community partnerships, utilizing technologies that save time, and working smarter to try to maintain the level of service the parks require in order for them to be in a safe, usable condition. However, this has not been enough to close the funding gap. After this report was presented, the Council unanimously requested staff bring back options to fund park operations and maintenance, and last February, both immediate and longer-term funding options were presented to Council. At that time, the Council asked for more information about the option to use stormwater funds to help pay for park operations and maintenance. And I'd like to now hand it off to our City Engineer, Mark Shoning, to provide an overview of the stormwater program and its funding.
Okay. Thanks, Craig. Mayor and City Council. So, I'm going to talk a little bit about the stormwater program in general and the utility rate structure, provide an overview of that. So, the stormwater is guided by, the program is guided by the comprehensive stormwater management plan, which was adopted back in 1993, and that really sets the policy for the program. At that time, it moved from a program that was focused on flood control to one that became multi-objective and was focused on not only flood protection but also clean water and healthy habitat for fish and wildlife. The program is comprised of both operations and capital improvements, and it involves six, five of the six Public Works divisions in its implementation. The annual operating budget is about $14 million, and the major activities include street sweeping, the leaf pickup program, catch basin cleaning, open channel and pipe system maintenance, public education and community outreach, and water quality sampling and analysis. The annual capital budget ranges from $2 to $4 million, includes funding from both monthly user fees and stormwater system development charges. And the major focus of the capital program is on the rehabilitation and restoration of the existing open channel system and pipe system. The annual revenues from utility fees budgeted in the current fiscal year is $16 million. And now, talk a little bit about the rate structure in your packet, one of the attachment to the agenda items summary is a billing insert that has some of this information along with it, and I'll refer to that as I go through this part of my presentation. So, the city has about 50,000 stormwater utility accounts. There are four categories of customer accounts. Three of those categories are residential, there are small, medium, and large residential. And the fourth category includes commercial, industrial, and institutional land uses. Over 75% of the accounts are medium residential, and that's residential properties with a building footprint between 1,000 square feet and 3,000 square feet of impervious surface. There are three components to the stormwater utility rate: impervious service, surface area, a street-related component, and administrative component. So, the impervious surface component for small and medium residential, that was established by taking a statistically valid sample of those types of properties and developing a, identifying a rate for those categories. So, properties within the small and medium residential may pay the same flat monthly rate for all properties within that category. So, for small residential, it's currently $6.55 a month, and for medium residential, it's $10.56 per month. For large residential and commercial, industrial, institutional properties, their base, their rate is based upon measured impervious area. So, each of those properties is individually, the impervious surface is measured, and they pay a rate of $3.64 per month for every 1,000 square feet of impervious area. So, that's one of the three components. The second is the street-related component, and that accounts for the impervious area of streets that isn't, doesn't provide a stormwater function. So, it's that area that excludes the curb and gutter. The curb and gutter conveys stormwater to the stormwater system. And then that impervious area of streets is allocated across all of the utility customers, and it's based upon the impervious area, it's correlated to the impervious area of the customer base. And that rate is, for residential, it's $1.81 for all residential categories. For commercial, industrial, and institutional, it's $1.28 per month for every 1,000 square feet of impervious area. And then the final component is the administrative component. It's a flat fee charged to all accounts. The fee is the same for small and medium residential, and it's currently 54 cents per month, and it's the same for all large residential and commercial, industrial, institutional properties at $1.69 per month. And so, that information, in terms of the rate structure, there's a table in the utility billing insert that talks, that shows those different land uses and different rate components. The rate setting for stormwater and wastewater, for that matter, is an administrative process that has, is publicly noticed, and a public hearing is held, and results in administrative orders setting the rates. If so desired, a majority of the Council can request to review that administrative order and may approve or modify or disallow the rate changes as proposed in that administrative order. The proposed mechanism for funding parks' operation and maintenance, two of those rate components, as I mentioned, the impervious surface area and the street-related component are based upon measured impervious area and do not provide good proxies for park usage or usage of the park system. However, the administrative component is a flat fee per account and provides the best mechanism for establishing a revenue system for parks. And adjusting the administrative component is the most transparent and easiest to understand. And this could be accomplished without any change to our current rate methodology, and would not require any change by E-Web in the billing structure. So, is how much a flat fee would generate, $1 per account, would generate approximately a little over $500,000 per year for parks' operation amendments, or maintenance. And so, amending the stormwater service to include the operation maintenance of parks would be the first step in establishing a fee for funding parks' operation maintenance. And the amount of funding that would be used in that mechanism would be established through the annual budget process. So, we're not proposing that parks and open space maintenance become part of the stormwater program. What we're proposing is to use an existing billing structure that we have in place to establish a flat fee to fund parks' operation and maintenance. With that, I'll turn it back to Craig.
Thanks, Mark. So, we're recommending today that Council decide to hold a public hearing on an ordinance that would amend the definition of stormwater to allow the use of stormwater service funds for the operation and maintenance of existing parks. And if this amendment were made, any proposed fee from the stormwater fund for park maintenance would still need approval through the regular budget process, as Mark mentioned, with review from the Budget Committee and Council. Stormwater funds for parks' operation and maintenance could then be used to restore service reductions such as reopening park restrooms, restoring park cleaning frequencies, and reversing the deferred maintenance list, particularly those items related to park safety and security. And with that, again, I thank you for this opportunity to provide this information, and Mark and I are available for questions.
So, I've got Mike and George Pauling and Betty and Alan and George Brown and Claire. Okay.
Just start.
So, my question is, if you're trying to figure out how to have enough funding to get parks up to where you'd like them to be, and you're in the process of having, have a conversation about how parks will be in the future, are those things kind of coming together in the conversation before we decide about what we need to do in terms of the funding issue?
Right. This recommendation today is just for operations and maintenance of our existing park assets. It's not for any future growth. So, any future growth and consideration with the Parks and Recreation System Plan, we are looking at potential opportunities to increase revenue, such as those we showed last February, as part of that plan as well.
My only other question is, is it, this thing you have on the sheet that says stormwater runs directly, flows directly from storm drains into waterways and creeks and so forth, and it's not treated, do you have any different plans for that? Do you find that okay? I mean, I want to understand that.
Are you reading that in the AIS? Because that's not, if we wrote that, that's not entirely correct.
Okay.
I mean, eventually it gets to the, oh, in the billing insert, right.
Yep, yep.
But it's probably true for the majority of the city because it was developed prior to the implementation of stormwater development standards, which I think was in 2008. And so, new development is required to treat the runoff. So, new development is addressing the water quality, and then through our capital improvement program, we're retrofitting water quality. So, that statement's not entirely true. We're, I mean, the goal is to, is to treat more and more of the runoff.
So, I don't know how old this is, but I think it, it would make the public think that we're not treating our water, and I think we should be fixing that if that's the way it's still currently being put out. Okay. Mike, you're first.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, gentlemen, for the information. The buck eighty and for residential and the buck and a quarter per thousand for commercial, that's current rate on stormwater?
That was, I think that was for the street-related component. So, if you look at the billing insert, and it varies, for, for all small residential, you can look at the total rate per month as $8.90. For all medium residential, it's $12.91. When you get to large residential and commercial, industrial, institutional, it's going to vary depending on the measured impervious area of that property. So, a large property with a lot of impervious area is going to pay much more than a small.
Is there any rate differential for onsite disposal of stormwater?
There's, yes. Property owners can get a credit for onsite if they mitigate onsite.
And where do most of those revenues go today? How are they spent, most of them?
Most of them are spent on operations. I think the, like 14, 14 million of the 60 million annually is operations, and the other 2 million focuses on capital improvement.
When you say operations, I'm asking these questions for the purposes of folks who are watching, so.
That's, a good share of it goes to our maintenance division for the leaf pickup program, street sweeping, cleaning catch basins, goes to our Parks and Open Space Division for maintenance of.
Trying to keep cigarette butts out of the river. Right?
There you go.
All right. I have a hard time with the nexus on this, I have to be honest with you, and the, I see that more and more in the last couple of years, what we've driven staff and what we've driven the standards and the ordinance towards on stormwaters and ordinance, is that we want to have more and more and more onsite disposal, and so, there's a lot more incentives that way. It makes building homes more expensive when that happens, but it's more environmentally friendly, and so, that's, that's okay. We'll have less affordable housing so that we treat that better. That's fine. But as time goes on, that means less and less money that's collected because we're intentionally trying to do this the right way. And so, raising people's rates in order to pay for something that has a tangential nexus, in my opinion, when we've already said we want your house to be more expensive because we want you to treat the stormwater onsite, but we're still going to charge you for stormwater fees anyway, and by the way, we're going to raise them in order to pay for parks, I have kind of a hard time with that, I have to be honest. I think there are better options for dealing with our parks. They're critical to most people. 81% support is a pretty big number. And as you mentioned, that's compared to other communities, that's fantastic. That's a great thing for all of us to celebrate. That's one of those things that crosses ideology, it crosses everything. Everybody loves our parks and our rivers. We, in my opinion, need a better way to do that that involves more people because they would like to be involved and isn't, kind of seem a little bit sneaky, like this does to me. So, I'm not sure I can support the idea. I have offered other ones, which I think are a wiser way to go. I think we ought to take advantage of our Parks Foundation and deal with that institution and its relation to the city differently. So, we'll see how that goes, but.
Just, just to be clear, that we're not suggesting there's a nexus between the stormwater program and operation of the parks and open space system. We're suggesting that the billing system provides an opportunity to fund parks' operation and maintenance, and the easiest way to do that is to change or to add on to the administrative component of the stormwater bill.
I understand that, and everybody at the table probably understands that, but the folks watching at home are going to think they're, we're trying to pull a fast one on them, and that, that's a problem for me. You're right, but I don't know how well that translates.
George Pauling?
Thank you. Yeah, going back to that survey, the 81% says it's very important. Was that about maintaining the parks or just the use of parks? What was that again?
That was specifically about adequately funding the maintenance of parks and recreation facilities.
Were there any follow-up questions to that about, are you willing to pay extra for that maintenance?
There, there were follow-up questions, and there, there was support for paying additional for the maintenance to make sure they're adequately funded, and again, we were hoping to bring back more information in November on the overall survey and all the questions that were asked.
Okay. And then, I too was a little concerned about the nexus between stormwater and parks' maintenance. So, basically, this is not really a stormwater fee, it's a park maintenance fee that's being, just, just being added to the billing system of the stormwater, is that correct?
Exactly.
Okay. Are there any other cities or counties that are doing something similar to this, or is, is it something that we're just trying out on our own, or what kind of research have we done on that?
Well, we've looked at a number of municipalities across the city or across the country, and there are examples where there have, there are parks' fees on a water bill or some sort of utility bill. The closest one to Eugene is actually Medford on their, their water bill. They have what they call a parks' utility fee, and it goes directly towards their maintenance and capital program for parks.
Okay. So, the other two questions I had at this point aren't really relevant because of what Mark was saying about this being a separate and a new fee. The questions I had was, how will the administrative process of setting the stormwater fees differ from parks' maintenance fee? And you went through the process of saying that it's going through the budget process and then the Council, and in, in that process also are at least two formal public hearings on the budget, as well as the added input at any time, correct? Okay. And then, another question I had was, well, one of the concerns I had was what was going to keep Peter from robbing Paul to pay, pay for one to pay the other, but since it's separate fees technically, then I don't, that's not a concern. At this point, I am okay with moving ahead with the public hearing because that's what it is, is a public hearing. Whether I'm going to support it or not, I'm a long way from making that decision. So, I want to see the additional information that you're talking about, some of the other, maybe some of the other survey questions, and then listen to what the public has to say about establishing a new fee without, one of the concerns I have is establishing a new, a new fee like this without a lot of public input and even possibly a vote by the public.
Okay. Betty, you're next.
Thank you. Is this, this would be a flat tax, right? You're talking about charging everyone the same amount of money?
Right. It's a flat fee.
Well, it's a tax in a sense, but it would be flat.
What I would say is, it's a flat tax for per category of use, so not everybody actually will pay the same amount, right? Is that true, if you're a large or small residential?
No, it would be, it would be the same, since it's the administrative component, it would be the same for every account.
Got it.
It would be a flat fee per account.
Got it.
So, somebody in a small cottage would pay the same as someone in a mansion?
That's correct.
Okay. That's, I find that a big problem. It was a problem with, the last time we talked about some kind of fee and had it voted on, and I think people will pick up on that really quickly, that everybody has to pay the same. On the other hand, it's better that it doesn't depend on how much water you use, right? Right. And wouldn't go up if you water your lawn.
Correct.
Then, I have a question about that, too. Currently, if you water your lawn, your bill goes up, right?
But you're, it's based on water usage, correct?
Yes, so, so it's water that isn't going into the sewers, it's just going into the ground.
That's correct.
I, I think that's really a problem. How about people who have, have paved their front yards? I see, walking around, I see places where people's yards are all paved for cars. I don't, I don't even know if that's legal, but I see them.
Well, the, when I talked about the, for medium residential, for example, there's 37,000 accounts. So, for commercial and industrial, it was a chore to measure the impervious area for each one of those customers individually. It would be enormous task to do that for, and to set a separate fee for every residential customer. So, residential customers are grouped into one of three categories, small, medium, and large.
Yeah, I got that.
So, there's some.
So, if you pave your yard, it doesn't make your house bigger?
That's correct.
And it wouldn't make your fee go up?
That's correct.
I mean, you would have maybe as much impervious surface as someone with a larger house, though.
That's correct. For, for residential, you're, we, it's measuring the footprint of the building and the garage.
And, okay, that's what I wanted to make, be clear about, so that someone who paves it all doesn't have to pay for that, even though they have created more runoff.
That's correct.
That's something I think we should do something about. And also, I think, have there ever been any thought of charging less for water usage in the, less sewer charge for water usage in the summertime? Actually, people who water their lawns are doing a favor for all of us because it's cutting down on the dry material, and.
So, it's a bit of a digression, but the wastewater bill that you pay is based upon your winter water usage, your average winter water usage. So, you're, so you're not paying a wastewater bill in the summer based upon all of your water use. We base it on a winter average, so, so you don't pay any more, in the summer, you're just paying for the water you use, and that, and your wastewater bill is based upon your average winter water consumption. So, you're not, you're not paying for additional water usage that doesn't go into the wastewater system in the summer.
Okay. I guess I haven't looked at my bill that closely, I just know it goes up. But I, I'm concerned, I'm, I'm willing to have a public hearing, but I would like to see us make it more progressive instead of a flat, a flat fee. Couldn't you do that the same way that you said small, medium, and large residents? Could there be a different fee for those?
But then, yeah, the, then it gets, it gets more complex because then you're asking E-Web to change the, the structure of the, of the rate, whereas the way, if, the way it's proposed, we're simply, which we do every year when, if rates increase, we tell E-Web, here's the new rate, and they simply add that into the system, and it's fairly straightforward. But if you're asking them to, now we want to create different user categories, and then it's a, it's a completely different.
But we'd be doing this because it's easy.
That's correct.
Rather than because it's fair. Okay. Thank you.
Alan?
I missed when you said, you know, some X percent equals of, increase equals $500,000. Have you said?
Yeah, what I said was, if, if, if the administrative fee for every account were bumped by a dollar, that would generate a little over $500,000 in annual revenue.
And the current gap in parks' O and M cut in the last budget was about $600,000?
It was about $350,000 directly to the, the park maintenance budget for fiscal year 14.
Fifty, okay. And can you go over what the uses of this would be more specifically?
More specifically? So, we would definitely reopen restrooms. We would definitely increase park custodial frequencies, so we would be cleaning restrooms and cleaning, you know, plazas and areas around high-use areas of parks and emptying the garbage more frequently. We would consider increasing irrigation, but we also want to take a look at our irrigation system so that they're actually as efficient as possible. So, we have some deferred maintenance, as I mentioned, on our irrigation systems. We'd like to increase some efficiencies with those. And again, we would be looking at a deferred maintenance list, so we have a number of areas from, from restroom facilities, playground equipment, hardscapes that need to be repaired, and so, we would be looking at those. And as I mentioned, safety and security projects first, so, including park lighting and such. And then, we would probably go down into the area of looking at our, some of our landscape care and maintenance that we haven't been maintaining over the years and try to find a way to make sure that those are compatible with our irrigation systems, water-wise. are compatible with our irrigation systems, water-wise, landscaping, and just making sure that their appearance is well-maintained as well. We've had to cut back a lot over the years, and the parks aren't quite as up in terms of appearance as they, as they had been, so.
And I would comment that our irrigation systems are not very water-conscious, not conservative. They're not very good in terms of the latest technology, in terms of how we, how we should be irrigating. If you look at California, what they've done is pretty amazing in terms of, we're not even anywhere near there, but we should be coming close to that. Is the rate percentage of stormwater that comes from the residential impervious surface and then street-related, are those proportional? So what I'm asking is, does, how much of the stormwater comes from the streets, and how much comes from the, from the impervious surfaces of residential, commercial, industrial?
I wouldn't, we could probably figure that out, but I don't know that off the top of my head.
A big portion comes from the street.
Right. Just because, yeah, we have over 500 miles of streets.
500 miles.
And a small portion of that is the curb and gutter.
Right. But a lot of it's the street.
Right.
Okay, so a big chunk. I don't see this as trying to shoehorn in Park O and M under stormwater and making that nexus. I think we're being very clear that what we're doing is amending this to add that. So it's, not going to change the name, but it's stormwater and park maintenance to some degree, but, you know, 10% of it or so will be related to stormwater. So that part doesn't bother me. I think it's economically very efficient to do it this way, because the administrative cost of doing it in an existing program is almost zero. A little staff time to do the math, but other than that, as opposed to any other mechanism, which would, which would create a new mechanism, which would have high administrative costs to collect the same amount of money, therefore, you'd have to have it be a higher rate. So this is a better deal for, for the residents. The flat fee, it's not progressive. It is, I mean, you have different rates, two different rates in the administrative fee in four different categories. Without changing too much, you could have four different rates and have this be progressive without changing the structure of this thing, and just say, on this rate, it's X, and this one, it's X plus Y, and this one, it's a little higher. And that way, it could be made more progressive, so each category has a different rate without changing the structure.
You can, you could have two different rates, because small and medium residential are one group. So they pay, that's one structure for the administrative component. And then large residential, commercial, industrial, institutional are a second group. So you could have different rates between those two groups. So you could only have two different rates.
Could you do four?
Not without, not without amending the structure of the, the rate structure.
What are the other mechanisms besides this for collecting stormwater money, or parks O and M money?
Other mechanisms? Yeah, I mean, we were looking at the levy. We were talking about earned revenue through sponsorships and, you know, more vendors out in our parks and such. We were looking at the philanthropy piece. And then we were also talked about just user fees. So people using our parks, you pay to play.
So we're at 25, too. We really want to get into our next thing. It's close to 12:45 as it can. We've got four people in a queue, so just, George Brown.
Thanks, ma'am. Well, I think we should just let this idea go and not let it, not send it to a public hearing, because I think it gets really tricky when you, the taxpayers, you pay their taxes, their property taxes, and it goes, they go into the discrete funds. And now we're fiddling around. We're taking, we're moving things from accounts to accounts. We do that, there are inter-fund transfers. I'm not saying, you know, you have to do that, some of that. But this is a little different, because this is basically, you know, when people pay their taxes, they think they're paying for park, they're paying for the stormwater fees, and a portion of their taxes are going to Public Works for the parks. And if there's a budget shortfall that year, and things can't be funded properly in all cases, okay, you bite the bullet, and you live with a little less park maintenance. But you, and you keep all that money in the stormwater fund, though, to keep the stormwater system functioning fully. This is basically an addition of a new city tax without voter approval. And, you know, we want to, there's a library levy. Voters get to decide whether they want to pay that extra money for the library improvements. There's no vote here. It's decided, the rates are decided by the city manager. And any rate increase is decided by the city manager. I mean, it says here, potential rate of service increases would occur during FY '17 budget process with input from the public budget committee and council. Well, you know, we, from time to time, we see rate increases for the hall service fees, airport fee increases, stormwater fee increases. There have been a few of those. The budget committee has never discussed any of those, in my, that I recall. So I think this is a little disingenuous here to think that, you know, there's going to be oversight by the budget committee of any, any rate increase that we do. And in one respect, you know, $500,000, we sub-fee the whole city budget. Is it that big of a deal? No. Yes, no. I mean, it's a, it's a somewhat considerable amount. It's not peanuts. And to have voters not, not involved with this, or the budget committee, really, in spite of what it says here, I just don't see the budget committee spending a lot of time on the, on the rate increase. I just think it's a really bad idea, and I won't, I won't support sending it to a public hearing. Thank you.
Claire?
Thank you. So thanks for the presentation. I do have a little bit of a critique on the triple bottom line analysis. It's really focused on parks, which is great, and we have good information around that. But it doesn't speak to any of the impacts of the potential stormwater change, fee change. So I don't know if that's because we don't know what it might be yet, or if we're even going to do it. So if we do send this out to a public hearing or take further action on it, I would like to see a triple bottom line analysis applied to the idea of the rate, of the fee, and how it might fall into those three categories. So I understand that this proposal wouldn't apply to give us any new capacity for parks, but I do see a connection with where we are now and where we might want to be. For my ward, the impact of not being able to maintain our current parks has meant many neighborhoods are waiting for new parks, because staff has prudently decided not to start new parks while we're not able to properly maintain our old ones, our current ones. So I'm really eager to look at strategies to increase our ability to do proper operations and maintenance. And I'm supportive of us looking for ways we can take action as a community on our own behalf to get the services that we want as a community, that we've identified. I think the library levy is an example of us doing that. I think that this idea might get more support if it was a graduated rather than a flat fee, but I can see how that's challenging with the approach that you're recommending. I don't think we have many flat fees in the city that apply citywide. So I think we're pretty, doing pretty well on the progressive taxation issue. And I wasn't quite clear what the amount would be set, but I think we were discussing the potential of it being as little as a dollar a month. So that would be $12 a year for each account, which certainly would not be anything that would break a family budget. I can see, you know, councillors have this critique that this could be viewed as sneaky, but we're discussing it right now in a public forum with the media watching, so I'm not sure how that's being sneaky. There would be a public hearing on it, which would also be televised and broadcast online. And as councillor Pauling points out, if we follow the recommendation here, there would be additional public hearings as part of the budget process. Again, lots of opportunity to alert the public and get public input. So I would support taking this to a public hearing to get more feedback from the public and get a sense of how folks think this might work or not work in terms of restoring some of the needed operation and maintenance budget for our parks.
Chris?
Thank you. The ability to, or the authority to impose a fee without the consent of the public is an awesome power. It really is. It's up there with eminent domain and other things, because it gives us the power to do something without the consent of the public. And as a result, to paraphrase advice given to Spider-Man, with that great power comes great responsibility. And I think that is why we are sitting here, kind of wondering, because we realize we have the responsibility to, to manage those kinds of powers that we have that the public does not consent on. Just like I've heard the same conversation on system development charges and other kinds of fees that, that we have the ability to impose without getting public consent. And so I think that's what I'm hearing in terms of a lot of the, not opposition as much as it is concerned, the desire to make sure we exercise that great power with, with responsibility. And it's the same thing for me, because I know that we represent the public, and the public expects us to represent their interests in a way that doesn't appear arbitrary or in our own self-interest. And one of the things that we would have to be able to do is to demonstrate that if we're going to use this great power, it is clearly and explicitly to the benefit of the citizens, and not to somehow protect an administrative payroll benefit operational aspect of the city. And I don't think we've been, we've been as clear on that as we could. We need to be able to say, if we decide to impose a fee, and I'm not opposed to imposing fees, I mean, we've done that, but you have to do it in a way that demonstrates that the ultimate beneficiary of that fee is not us, but is the public. And that's, that's the part that I want to see very clearly. I'm fine with going to a public hearing, because I would like to hear what the public's perspective is. I don't think we're being sneaky either. It's not for me an issue about being sneaky. It's for me an issue of acting without the consent of, of the public. And so if we're going to do that, we have to do it in a way that demonstrates that we do have their best interests at heart. And that's what I want to see clearly in here if we do go forward. The notion that you're using a fee instead of a tax, I understand, because a fee is what you can impose in taxes, you can't. And so the ability to make a fee progressive is inherently, I don't want to go all the way to say impossible, but it's very difficult, because the minute you start making a fee progressive, it's no longer a fee, it's a tax. And then you have to start going through mechanisms to do that. So fees cause trouble for people, because the mechanism for a fee, in order for us to be able to exercise that power, it's by its nature regressive. And there's not much you can do around that. I'm not necessarily opposed to that if the benefit can be clearly shown. But that's the piece that's most important for me, is whatever it is we do, if we're going to exercise that power, it has to very clearly demonstrate we're not the beneficiary, they are.
Thanks, Mayor. And in order to truncate some of my comments, I'm just going to say ditto to Claire and ditto to councillor Pryor. I will say this, though. I do think that this deserves a, a public discussion, that we should have a public hearing on this. I am hearing constantly over the last three years, and I've been on council for people, not only in my ward and other wards, you know, why aren't you watering the, you know, the parks on a regular basis? The grass is brown. This needs to be fixed. That needs to be fixed. I think that for the sake of clarity, people need to understand that there's a fundamental difference between what a tax is and what a fee is. A fee is designed to meet the cost of service, no more than that. Taxes have a lot more flexibility built into them by the nature of what they are. And so you can go above and beyond the cost of service with a tax. What we are suggesting, and what I think city staff is bringing to us, is just a mechanism for us to meet what the need is out there, and a way to do that that does not require us to necessarily go out for the vote of the people, which obviously gives a lot of people heartburn. So I think having a, a conversation about that, having the public present their ideas and thoughts, I just got an email, probably all of you have an email this morning, from at least one constituent who is concerned about the idea of increasing fees. And, you know, again, I think that we have very difficult issues to grapple with, but very real needs in terms of maintaining our park system, and a park system that is basically a high-level, high-functioning park system. And if we continue to let that slide, because we are, you know, getting out of sync with water, getting out of sync with other maintenance issues, that, you know, we will very rapidly not have a world-class park system. And that park system will be an eyesore on the community. So I think that we need to look very carefully and very hard about not only the mechanisms that we use to fund operation and maintenance, but also understanding, communicating to the public what would happen if we don't maintain our park system.
Thank you, everybody, for all the input. Claire, you want to put the motion out?
Move to direct the city manager to schedule a public hearing on an ordinance to amend the definition of stormwater service to include the operation and maintenance of parks in open spaces.
Seconded.
Been seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five. In opposition, one, two, three, it passes. Thank you. Going to the next item for today. One we've asked for, and been a lot of concern about, and that's earthquake preparedness.
I'm just going to turn it over to Murnee and her team to take us through a presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the-
Hey, Murnee. Can you bring your microphone?
Sorry. Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Murnee Dought. I'm the Risk Services Director. And with me is Matt McCray, who you know as the Climate and Energy Analyst, but he works half-time in the city's emergency management program and is our natural hazard mitigation specialist, our lead on natural hazard mitigation planning and continuity of operations planning. So I'm really glad to have Matt here by my side as we talk about what we are doing for earthquake preparedness. We sent you an AIS, which has, I think, a lot of detail in it. What I am going to do is just give you the high points of the broader scope of work of what we are doing. And then Matt's going to talk specifically about the natural hazard mitigation plan and earthquake preparedness. And, thank you. We have a few slides for you. So I'm going to do the overview. Matt is going to talk about the Oregon Resilience Plan, which does inform the city of Eugene's actions and priorities, and then details about our, our own mitigation planning process, and then our priority actions. So we are, have been heavily involved in planning over the past two years, and in the past year have adopted a new emergency operations plan meeting FEMA standards. And it's our first joint emergency operations plan with the city of Springfield. We updated our natural hazard mitigation plan, which is jointly done with Springfield also, and has been for several years, like three, five-year updating periods. So we've been partnering with them for quite a while. Matt was the lead on some very innovative work that was done on that, and he'll tell you more about that. And again, the city of Eugene is engaged in a city departmental wide continuity of operations planning effort that Matt will talk about in detail. We are also heavily involved in training and exercises, especially over this next year, because the city of Eugene will be participating in a four-day regional FEMA-sponsored exercise called Cascadia Rising. So we are really pushing out training, bringing in trainers, and we're also offering opportunities to our partners, EWEB, U of L, and County, to participate in these trainings as well. That exercise, I do want to point out, is not a full-scale exercise. It's what we call a functional exercise, and it will be focused on our ability to communicate between emergency operations centers. We're doing a lot of community outreach. We have, we're really lucky. We have an AmeriCorps member working with us. This is our third year partnering with AmeriCorps. Wonderful opportunity for us. And we're also contracting now with the Oregon Partnership for Disaster Resilience, because they do such a wonderful job in, in outreach, and that just extends our ability to meet the increased demand for information and assistance. We have a very active volunteer program with our certs. Our next academy starts on October 5th, and it's full. So that's, there's a waiting list. It's a wonderful program. We've been- It's a wonderful program, we've been, uh, training emergency response volunteers for over 10 years here in the community. Matt is going to talk specifically about the mitigation actions, and then as, in all of this work, we are actively partnering with all, all of these, uh, people in the community, some of whom are in the room right now. I saw Josh Bruce from OPDR, Janine Perisi from E-Web, and I, I can't see behind me, so I don't know who else, who else is here. But we have really benefited from this work and partnership. We're all doing our own work internally and then we're coming together and working, we're, Eugene is supporting the E-Web Water Distribution Projects, and they are, uh, supporting us in our efforts, for example. So with that, I am going to turn it over to Matt, and he's going to give you detail about our mitigation efforts.
Thank you. Mayors and city councilors, thanks for making the time for this discussion. I'm just going to briefly discuss the Oregon Resilience Plan, you may be familiar with it. It was completed in 2013 by the state of Oregon in partnership with a number of community experts, uh, from across the state, including some from here in Eugene, City of Eugene staff, as well as E-Web staff. The, the Oregon Resilience Plan, Plan, um, discusses the impacts of a Cascadia subduction zone event, that, that big offshore earthquake that we're all talking about. Um, and, and since it came out in 2013, it's really helped to, uh, inform our discussions and raise awareness, um, and, and help us be more thoughtful, I think, about our, uh, our earthquake planning. A couple of really important punchlines from this Oregon Resilience Plan. They, they provide estimates, again, based on expert input, on the time to restore critical services. Keep in mind, this is valley-wide, this isn't Eugene-specific, but the general estimates, I think, are worth us thinking about. That, that crucial systems like electricity may take on the order of one to three months to get back up and running. Police and fire stations, two to four months to get back up and running. Water and sewer, on the order of a month to a year to get those systems restored. Priority highways, six to nine months, and again, that's just the priority highways. And healthcare facilities, on the order of 18 months to get them up and fully functional again. It's, it's kind of hard to read those and it's, uh, if you think about the implications, it can be a little bit staggering. Uh, the great thing is that there is a lot that we can do, uh, when we take a long-term perspective on, on managing some of these risks. So key recommendations from, uh, the Oregon Resilience Plan, there are several of them, I'm just going to hit a few. Plan for a 50-year time horizon, so they're very specific, there's a lot to do here. We didn't really have awareness of this Cascadia subduction zone, um, and the implications there until the 1990s, and so many of our, much of our infrastructure is built, uh, without code that requires seismic integrity, um, that now seems warranted. But when we think about a long-term view, there's a lot we can do, and especially if we're, um, if we're embedding that into a lot of our decisions early on, the cost for seismic upgrades doesn't have to be huge, it can be, um, really pretty affordable. Another key recommendation, inspect infrastructure. Obviously, it's the first step of understanding, uh, what's out there and, and what kind of condition it is in and how things will perform, and then therefore prioritizing upgrades. Um, so inspections are, are high on the list of recommendations. Similarly, making public sector investment in upgrading infrastructure. The other images in here have been fairly generic, but I'd like to point out, this is actually, uh, E-Web doing seismic upgrades to their water treatment facility at Haynes Bridge, um, they are taking a leadership role there and in making investments on behalf of all of us so that we can, uh, drink water, um, in, in the event of a, an earthquake, that we will get that system up and running sooner because they have made this kind of So with that, I'm going to turn to our Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan. So this is our local plan for Eugene and Springfield. We just updated this, uh, and it was approved by FEMA in 2015. As I mentioned, it's developed in partnership with Springfield, they were intimately, um, involved in, in the entire process, along with a whole number of other partners. Um, Murnee gave that list of, of partners who've been involved in, in a whole bunch of preparedness, uh, including the update of this Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan. So, um, thanks to the peers, there are a number of them here. Thanks for, for, uh, for your involvement. And most importantly, it prioritizes mitigation actions for multiple hazards, so it's not just earthquake, it's looking at flood, landslide, um, winds, winter storm, and a number of other hazards. And, and it's all focused on, what do we do now so that when those events happen, they're less bad? Um, and, and there's, there's a lot that we can do. We started, uh, the update of our Natural Hazers Mitigation Plan by conducting, um, a very thorough, sector-by-sector vulnerability assessment. So we sat down with experts in each of a dozen different fields, we spent six hours with them, asking them questions about, how does your system function now, where are some of the weaknesses on a regular day, and then how would it respond in the case of a flood, or a wildfire, or an earthquake? Um, so we had really extensive discussions with them, and we learned a ton. We talked with experts from the drinking water sector, healthcare and public health, sanitary sewer, the electricity sector, natural systems, people who understand our local forests and waterways, housing, food, transportation, stormwater, communications, public safety, and fossil fuels. So we had a number of conversations, we asked about interdependencies, what system does your system depend on in order to operate? There are a number of things that we learned from this, um, and I'm happy to point you towards those, um, later today or at another time, there's, there's a lot there, but, um, one of the big punchlines that we took out of it is that, um, as far as interdependencies are concerned, there are three systems that all of these systems rely on in order to operate and be maintained and be restored in the aftermath of something like an earthquake. And, um, those are electricity, fossil fuels, and transportation. If any of those aren't working, the other systems don't work. Um, so it's a, it's a, it's a really huge punchline, as I mentioned, there are a number of other lessons that are really important and that inform our priority of mitigation actions as well, but that's a key one. So, um, the last bit here, I'm just going to share some of the active earthquake mitigation actions. The Hazard Mitigation Plan has, as I mentioned, a number of actions for multiple hazards, I'm just focusing on earthquake, and then I'm just focusing on a few of them that are, that are currently in, in motion. I want to recognize the leadership of the folks at Public Works who put money forward to do a seismic evaluation of 30 of our city-owned bridges. They picked out the ones that are most, uh, most crucial routes, and, and there, we're currently overseeing a, um, a contract of, with engineers who are inspecting our bridges to understand how will they perform, so that we can think about where might we begin to make upgrades. Um, there, we're also at the very beginning stages of hiring a firm to do the same evaluation of our critical city-owned buildings. Uh, and we're working naturally, um, right along with facilities, we're, they're, they're taking the lead, we're helping them, um, on the emergency management side to, to do that work. We are also, as, as Murnee mentioned, we're doing departmental continuity of operations plans. So that really is, um, asking ourselves, what are the essential services that each department provides when things aren't ideal? When we have a disturbance of some kind, what services, um, need to be maintained no matter? And then how do we go about doing that? So if we, if the power goes out, or if we can't occupy the buildings that we normally occupy to do our, provide our services, how do we do that anyway? Um, and so it's just a matter of, of, of setting in place plans for, for the, um, the suboptimal conditions. Um, we're doing that across the organization right now, and we're, we're in the middle of that process. Um, and again, we have partners who are doing a number of things, I'm going to hit on a couple that E-Web is, is leading, um, but there are partners, um, doing, making all kinds of, um, headway in, in mitigation actions and preparedness actions. E-Web is actively, uh, developing alternative sources of drinking water. You probably know that all of our water currently comes from McKenzie River, and that leaves us a bit of a liability there. But as I mentioned, they're doing, um, upgrades, seismic upgrades to that treatment facility, so they're, they're working on that, but they're also seeking alternative sources so that we can diversify our water source. And, um, to me, that's, it's huge, it's, um, really important for all of us, and it shows tremendous leadership on behalf of, of our colleagues at E-Web. They're also doing a pilot project, um, to, uh, experiment with microgrid. Uh, you may be familiar with this, but it's, they're, they're working to, um, to encourage small-scale local electricity generation and looking at, how can we do that effectively, cost-effectively, and, and increase the resilience of our local electric grid? Um, and again, as Murnee mentioned, community outreach and education with a, a number of partners. So those are just a few of the actions that are currently in process right now, um, and we'd like to leave the rest of the time for, for questions and conversation. A couple of, of summary points, um, we are, we're looking to the Oregon Resilience Plan to help us, you know, to help guide our thinking about how we deal with earthquake. All of this takes long-term vision, and I think we have that as an organization, um, and, and long-term commitment. But because it's long-term, the cost can be, um, really pretty affordable, it doesn't have to be a huge burden. Um, we're actively working many strategies right now, and we're leveraging the community partnerships that we, that we benefit from, um, across the community. So that's all we have to say. So we'll leave for questions.
Thank you. So, Mike, I've got in the queue, Alan, Claire, Greg, Chris. Okay. Um, I think I just lost my question. Oh, one of the things that, uh, came to my mind is how you're preparing the people who might have to answer these questions on phones. How are we preparing people in our various departments that intersect with the public when the public has these concerns, to be sure they have the information they have or that are able to turn people toward that information? I don't know if you've done any work on that, but I think that's a, um, a key piece that, uh, those, those folks who have to intersect know, know what's going on and are able to tell people where they can find that information or help them find that information.
Right.
Okay. I would say that, that's an interesting, um, interesting food for thought because we haven't done any special communication within the organization on fielding those kind of questions. Typically, they would come to emergency management, but we can do that and try to get people focused. I, I do know that there have, uh, been people searching for answers-
Right.
-at, since the big forum at the U of O, and we've been working with, as I said, Oregon Partnership for Disaster Resilience and the U of O to try to corral some of those questions and, and, uh, have a more systematic way for people to get information. So I appreciate that, and we can think about that.
I appreciate this for us, because we could answer more questions or at least know where to go now, but I, but I also think, uh, and I know there's, uh, various groups that are communicating with our neighborhood associations and helping them, um, be able to talk about it more, but I think of people like in our office with Reagan, who answers the, the phone, for her to be able to, um, be up on it enough to be able to know where to direct things seems, and I think that's true in a lot of offices in, in different parts of the city.
Exactly, and we do have an emergency management website, there, it's on, you know, the part of the Public City of Eugene website. We have a lot of good information posted, and also we do have a series of public, uh, preparedness events because September is National Preparedness Month. That information's on the website. I know that the U of O developed an FAQ after the public forum, and so we have made a commitment to look at that and then put a link to that on our website. We haven't done that yet, we need to vet the questions and make sure they're, they're what we need to answer as the City of Eugene, but we will do that.
Great, thank you. Mike, you're up.
Thank you Mayor. The Mayor touched on exactly the subject I wanted to talk about. I wanted to go a little bit further though. Um, I, I agree entirely with her that, I, I think as a council, as a city government, we have a twofold responsibility. One is a systemic look, which, and thank you for the presentation, to look at the things we're responsible for making sure that those systems work right, to make sure they're resilient, and, and that's a good thing, and we ought to spend time doing that. But I think, I don't know, maybe almost a more important question to me is, what's our duty to make sure the people who live here are prepared for what they will actually have to face? And I think it's great that you have the kind of information that we've taken all the intelligent first steps to provide people with the kinds of information about how they can be prepared, to be resilient in the case of an emergency. But I think we ought to go another step, and, and the best example, I think, is what E-Web did recently with the three-gallon water containers. That starts a conversation. You, you make those easily available, that was an organizational thing that they did, to make those easily available, and they're all gone like that! Now, those thousands of folks are prepared, they've got the water, but they're also now mindful of, what else do I need, what else do I need to be doing to be prepared? So making some little piece of this puzzle of being independently prepared, easy for people to, to bite off, and that, I think that gets them in the mindset and in the habit of looking at the rest of it, and how do I, how do I be prepared? Because certainly, the more we do to prepare everybody for the impact, the less systemic work that needs to be done, the more individuals are prepared to take care of the, the emergencies they'll face. So I'd like to, I, I mean, your thoughts, and I'd like to encourage a twofold approach.
Well, I would say that we agree with you 100%, and that's why it's so important for us to have a community outreach coordinator. And with our coordinator, last year, we were able to work very closely with the neighborhood associations, and the southeast neighbors were really leaders and developed a pilot project, Neighborhood Emergency Preparedness Plan. So that, that really reinforces the work that we're doing about individual preparedness and, um, volunteerism, but puts the, the neighbors together, working together on emergency preparedness. We're also partners with E-Web and contributed toward those, uh, many, uh, water bottles that they distributed, and will continue to participate in that process, we think it's very important. And internally, we do, um, offer our employees the ability to purchase emergency supplies through us and encourage that, to help them be able to feel that their families are safe and secure, and, um, they're able to respond to emergencies, especially if they're in police, fire, and public works and are first responders. I think we, there is an opportunity to roll that thinking out further into the community with other employers, working with their employees, and again, with our community outreach coordinator, I think we have an opportunity, and our partnership with OPDR, we have just increased capacity to get that message out.
Well, I, I agree with you, and I agree that, you know, when they had the university talk, what you saw was so many people coming out, ask questions, and to get better informed. There's a very, I think that article in New York, you know, I mean, that really sparked some people thinking. But I think there's a great deal of power in, in, in listing the members of our community as volunteers in an effort to, to be better prepared. I think people want to be a part of a solution and want to do something, we just have to make it easier for them to bite off that first step or to do something about it. Um, and frankly, I, I know we've asked for an opportunity to begin meeting again with the Intergovernmental Relations Subcommittee, I'd like us to consider the idea of we let, uh, of our, this, of our agenda on that this next year, that we may want to consider lobbying legislature for more funds for the city to, uh, be a larger part of, like the water bottle promotion, and get more of those to more people. And let's see if we can engage the state in that process too, so.
Small addition, I think they also made those kits for this, um, city available to-
Yep.
-to us-
Yep.
...as well. So we have the ability to demonstrate what goes into that, right?
That's right.
Yep. Alan, you're next.
Yeah, I think outreach and education is extremely important on this issue, and could you describe the program, or I've been to a couple of neighborhood meetings where they've had presentations to the neighborhoods about preparedness? Could you describe that a little bit?
Well, as I said, we have a community outreach program, and, and for the last three years, because we have an AmeriCorps member working with us, have had three, we're on, um, our third, it's been a very good experience for us, and, and this year, we have Devon Maxey as our Community Outreach Coordinator, and she's in the, the audience too, and my, I can see her in the back of my head. Um, we, uh, have various presentations that we can give to community groups. The basic presentation is, you know, the, um, what used to be called the 72-hour kit, but now it needs to be more like a two-week kit, what you need to maintain yourself, uh, during a disaster until basic services are, um, are restored, put back in order. So that's the basic, uh, presentation that we can give to any community group, neighborhood group, uh, anyone who wants- group, anyone who wants it. We also, as I said, we're partnering now with OPDR, and we have very skilled volunteer trainers who lead those, those presentations, too. So, we have now a very good capacity to get that information out.
Yeah, I, I've seen that presentation a couple of times, and I encourage every neighborhood association to do that if they haven't done it already. In California, they do block-by-block plans, and where you meet your neighbors and you plan what's going to happen and how you're going to get the electricity and the gas shut off and things like that. And those, and who make sure everybody's safe in a smaller little cohort. Is there a good place people can go to look at what it takes to put together an emergency kit? Is there a web address or site?
Yes, there are a lot of different, there's a lot of information out, out online, and our website includes basic links to getting a 72-hour kit or, and more, the Red Cross and the FEMA, all sorts of.
Where would they go on our website to see that?
It's the City of Eugene Emergency Management Program website, and I think ready.gov is one of the key, key national websites that has all that basic information. And I do want to say that you're, we do, when we do our outreach, we do what's called Map Your Neighborhood, where the neighborhood groups get together and they just map out who, what resources are where and who, who has, who has shovels, who has chainsaws.
Right. Our neighborhood actually did that.
Yeah.
A couple of places. And then, is there a place where people can go to get home seismic evaluations?
Well, that is one of our, the most frequently asked questions. What we have on our.
Oh, I keep getting it asked by the answer.
I know. We, what we have on our website is a link to a FEMA document on what you need to know about the seismic upgrading of your own home. We can't give recommendations or references to contractors. So, people need to, I think if you start on our website and look at the FEMA document, you'll get an idea of the questions you should be asking, and then you can go through the regular process. This is one of the answers that Josh Bruce has perfected at the U of O because they got a lot of these questions after their forum. And you go through the, the same process that you would do when you're hiring any contractor. This is the information I need about securing my house to its foundation or securing my chimney. Do you do that kind of work? What are your references?
Okay.
Go from there.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought up the E-Web alternative sourcing. That's very important. Right now, we're dependent on the Mackenzie River, and if something happens to that or Hayden Bridge, it's very, getting alternative, I think we're one of the largest cities in the country without an alternative source of water. So, that's a critical part of a plan that E-Web's already doing and is doing a good job of moving. Probably should redouble their efforts and do it faster, as we should be doing most of the stuff that we've, need to be doing. And I think it's great we're doing an assessment of bridges in our buildings. What's the timeline for getting those critical ones done?
The Public Works Project for Bridges, the 30 Most Important Bridges, will be completed by the end of January, but that, what will be completed is the analysis, the vulnerability analysis, and then the recommendations on the upgrades. After that, it's a process of prioritization and finding funding to make needed changes. It'll be the same process with our building assessment. We'll ask for a vulnerability assessment, and then we'll need to come to you and, I'm sure, prioritize what buildings.
When's the building assessment?
We have, we are going to undertake it this year. We've just begun an initial prioritization of our facilities. Even though all of our fire, all of our fire stations have, were built to a higher seismic standard and have been upgraded over time, I would still like to take a look at those facilities along with the police facility and actually have, have an analysis of those buildings and make sure that we know that they'll withstand an earthquake of the magnitude of Cascadia. And then, we'll, we'll go from there.
So, can you go over the levels of, of safety for a building? There's, there's get out safely, occupy, operational.
There are other people in this room who can do that better than I can, but I can tell you that for, I'll, I'll give you my version, and then Mike Pennwell might want to take the mic. But there are, the public safety standard for our police facility and our fire stations is that they are operable after an earthquake. For our other buildings, they meet a life safety standard. So, that means that people evacuate safely, but the building may not be operable at all. So, you'd walk away and you go somewhere else.
But you can't really do operations from it.
Uh-uh.
Yeah, I, I think we really need to look strongly at other buildings that are in a life safety, meaning to bump them up. I mean, the new city hall's a great example where that's a building that I think should be an operable building. I don't think we're, I think we're playing on life safety right now, aren't we? And, and other kinds of buildings like that, making them so that they can actually be used after the earthquake is, is a really important thing. And that is a chunk of money to do that. If we did it on the city hall, it actually adds to the cost of it, I suspect.
Councilors, like, we are looking at the new city hall because I think our July 4th earthquake informed us. If that, if it was ribbon-cutting day on the new city hall after all these years of effort to have that, a brilliant city hall for the community, I mean, that would be tragic. So, we are working with the, the risk services and facilities are working with the City Hall Policy Group and are, I think we have a path forward to enhance the seismic standard to make the new city hall operable. Because we want, if and when Cascadia comes, we want our council and our city manager and staff to be able to operate from the seat of government, not from tents in the parking lot, so.
One of the other things when we see natural disasters in other places, the places where people go are the public buildings, the community centers and things like that. So, I think it actually goes beyond just city hall. Goes beyond to our other public buildings that really need to be operable. And another question is, condition of our local dams, is that assessment, and the danger of inundation from flooding, should that occur?
Yeah, the Army Corps is, scout, is the main. There's a number, right, a number of dams upstream of us. Army Corps does regular inspections of their, of their dams for seismic, seismic integrity. There are a few things around dams to understand. One, most of ours are earthen, that, and they, so they tend to perform fairly well in a seismic event. Also, the further away you get from the coastline, the less the shaking. So, as we continue inland, the shaking that we expect to experience up where our dams are located is less than what we'd expect to experience here, unless than what we'd experience on the coast. I know that the Army Corps is interested in paying attention to seismic safety and, and looking to make upgrades to dams. There's not a lot we can do other than continue to monitor them and urge them to continue to do that. The things that we can do here as far as mitigation is create a, a warning system that will function no matter the conditions and make, make evacuation routes really clear to people. So, those are both on our list of things to do.
We don't have a warning system now?
We have, yeah, we do have warning systems, and, and they, they function, they, they function fairly well, but they're opt-in, right? They tend to be, they're reverse 911, but then there's also the alert sends, right? So, people can opt-in and get a call, but if you aren't signed up for that, it's not necessarily going to work, and it, and it's unclear how well that would work if we had a widespread power outage. So, those are the kinds of things that we're looking at, is are there ways for us to set in place warning systems that would work under any condition?
You, for folks on TV, do you know that opt-in site or number to call in to get into it offhand? Do you can get that before we finish off today? That'd be a good public thing for people who are watching.
That's a great idea. Thank you.
I'd like to know.
And our interim emergency manager is in the back of the room, and he may have that information.
What is it?
Oh, it's, it's.
Would you? Thanks.
Okay. Forrest Chambers, City's Air Emergency Manager. Hey, we've got about 10 minutes left to go here, and I've got Claire and Greg and Chris. Claire?
Yeah, thanks. I just have a couple of questions about some of the other partners who might have been involved in the conversation. Has LTD been involved in the earthquake conversation around transportation?
Yeah.
Infrastructure?
Yeah.
I assumed. I just didn't catch their logo up there.
Yep.
And then, for my ward, an obvious concern is the rail yard and the potential for flammable materials and hazardous materials becoming a big risk with the crude oil trains and such. So, how has the Union Pacific been involved in this conversation and work?
When we did the vulnerability assessment, we had not only difficult, it was, we were unable to get Union Pacific involved. So, we tried our best to try and engage them in a conversation so we could talk about the implications, and, and we were unable to do that.
That is extremely disappointing and upsetting to hear.
Yeah.
Quite frankly. I mean, I'm not blaming you, obviously. So, maybe we need to turn to a higher authority. I don't know who is the higher authority over Union Pacific, because that's the federal government.
Nobody.
But that is very upsetting, considering the lives that would be at risk, given what goes through that rail yard.
I, I agree with you. The, the one thing I would say is that we do have a hazmat team that's located here in town that has, that does have better connectivity to Union Pacific on a, on a fairly regular basis. So, while we weren't able to engage them in, you know, a system-wide vulnerability assessment, there is exchange of information there that helps us inform response activities specifically.
Right. And I know we've, we've worked hard on our budget to make sure that hazmat units stayed locally.
Yes.
So.
Counselor?
And then my, I'm sorry, I, I would just add that the Fire Department has worked on a specific oil train mitigation plan, and there was quite a large meeting last year with our senators and other elected public officials, and the, the rail was, were represented in that meeting. So, whereas they didn't participate in the vulnerability assessment process, they are participating in the, the response, as Matt said. And I, I know our Fire Department is very aware and engaged and being very proactive on the issue.
Thanks for adding that. That's good to hear. And then, my other question was a little bit on the opposite side, and that's around the financial sector. After natural disasters, people being able to access their bank accounts and get money to survive can be very challenging if the, the bank system has not, not able to operate. Is there any conversation around that aspect of need?
That, it wasn't a part of the assessment, but certainly, you know, certainly that was recognized, especially when it came to the housing sector. We discussed exactly that, the, the need to access funding. Is it something we're actively working to, to smooth, you know, to improve that potential service? Not, not here within, you know, city staff, we're not working on that, but.
So, I don't mean to get funding to do repairs. I mean for people to get money out so they can.
Yeah.
Put gas in their car if there's gas available.
Yeah.
That was part of the conversation, but not necessarily a specific area.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
Those are my questions. Thank you.
Greg?
Okay, my, my questions have a little bit more to do with our first responder preparedness, and I know I asked John about a week ago about this, and I'll ask you as well. What plans, and I know the Fire Department isn't here today, but what plans do we have? And I'm talking to the council as well about this of reestablishing our USAR group, which we were, we took them out of the budget a few years ago because of the constraints that we had, but the USAR group is critical for the Fire Department to go in, say if we have some kind of earthquake in which we have people that are, are trapped underground or in-ground, to have the, the tools and the people with the appropriate training to pull people out of those situations. So, I want to know kind of, you know, from your perspective, you know, where we are with that? And secondly, do we need to take an even deeper look at bringing that group back as part of the Fire Department's palette of, a range of, of tools that they have to be able to address a major emergency such as earthquake here?
We have Forrest Chambers with us. He's our interim emergency manager, and he's also a firefighter and member of the hazmat team, and he can field this question.
Yeah, so, the state eliminated the USAR program. They transferred all the equipment to the city. So, we have all of the equipment, but haven't had funds for the training. I think that's, that's the gap, is trying to figure out a way to fund those. They do have some ongoing training for confined space because the city provides confined space emergency backup if somebody was in a confined space at Public Works or places. So, they do, they do have some of that training, but I think that, you know, obviously with these things, help's going to be a long ways away, like your, you know, for the USAR-type teams, and so.
So, the next, the next team is in Portland, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and that would be a local team. Since the state has eliminated the teams, there's some teams that have kept theirs. Salem, I think, kept a portion of it. Salem, Portland has kept a portion of it. They've all tried to keep the equipment up and running, but haven't had the funding to actually do the full training.
So, in your opinion, if we, if we were able to find the money, I think it might be a good idea for us to reinvest.
I, I don't want to speak for the fire chief, but in my opinion, I think that it is very beneficial to have. There's a gap that we have because they've eliminated that state program, for sure.
And my second question, and last question is this, and we're coming up on time, is what also struck me in the presentation was the issue of the condition of our, our bridges and our roads, and subsequently, what tunnels that are, you know, tunnels around here except going out to the coast or whatever, but mostly the bridge situation and what federal state dollars would be available to do the upgrades that are necessary to, you know, maintain the structural integrity of, you know, these, these assets before they're compromised by, you know, some, you know, natural disaster. So, you know, I know that right now, there is a, you know, there's a move in Congress to have a fully funded six-year transportation bill, but even now with that, there's going to be a significant portion of the road funds that are going to have to be dedicated to the upgrade and repair and replacement of bridges in this country that are in horrible shape. Nope, there was one that collapsed on I-5 up in Washington just a year ago. So, and that's without having an earthquake or tornadoes. So, what is the, where are we at with that?
Very briefly, I know ODOT has a long-term plan, a 50-year plan to upgrade, make seismic upgrades to bridges in their, within their system. And I would say that us, doing the inspection of our local bridges right now, I think helps put us in a position where if funds become available from the state or the federal government, that we're in a good position to, you know, we will have already prioritized the bridges that we would upgrade, and that will put us in a, in a good position to be competitive for those funds. But I don't, I'm not aware currently of dollars specifically for that use, but I'm also not, don't work in transportation full-time, so there may be other information there.
Quickly, in general, what's the state of our bridges?
I'm over four. No, you're over a second.
I'm over four. Okay. Never mind. Never mind. If I have four.
Chris?
Yeah, I guess I've got time to basically say thank you very much for the presentation. This was very helpful in terms of how things interconnect, and I guess just, huh?
You've got one minute.
I got one minute? Okay. And, and I guess a single thought I can summarize in a minute is, to me, one of the most important resources that we have at our disposal for this, more, more so than a lot of other things, is the people. Putting together the right teams of people, whether it's at the, the higher level, you know, administratively, logistic, planning, operations, and finance, all the way down to the neighborhood level and the schools. And for folks to know that in any disaster, even though they need to be prepared to be self-sufficient, they're not alone. And I think that distinction is very important because when most situations fall apart, it's when people start acting independently and they don't act as teams. And so, maintaining that infrastructure of people, I think, is just as critical as an infrastructure of material. And our ability to figure out ways to communicate that infrastructure of people, I think, will be a, a critical element to maintaining continuity of services, but also just public order.
55 seconds.
No, we're out of time, but what I would say to you is, you can see how eager people are for information and to sort of dig into this a little bit. So, I, I would suggest if there are more things that you want more information about, you let them know, and if we have enough there to want to have another conversation, we can figure that, that out. I do think as, as Mike and others have said, I think it's a critically important discussion for the community, and so, and this is a place where we talk about those things for the community and. the community and try to figure out what our, our role is. So I, I think it's a very important discussion, and you should really not think this is it, if you, if there's more that you need in, in terms of information and what we do. I'm going to close--
Do they have that emergency opt-in information?
We do. Thank you, yes. If people want to call to get an opt-in phone call in emergency conditions, the website there is www.lcog.org/alertme.
Okay. You may want to put that in a place that people, our attention gets called to it, right? Thank you very, very much. We appreciate it.
Nice.
So Alan?
Thanks.